All right, just one minute. We're live now.
Ready? All right. Good evening. We will call an order. The Board of Commissioners Nether Providence Township Meeting of February 24, 2022. We'll start with a roll call. Our township manager, Dave Grady, and our president, Mackenzie, are participating remotely this evening. Starting, so we'll go with our township solicitor.
Thank you. It's Robert Scott, township solicitor. Max Cooper, Ward One Commissioner.
Matt Gorson, Ward Two Commissioner.
Mike Knapp, Ward Third, Ward Three Commissioner.
Shannon Barnes, Ward Five Commissioner.
Robert O'Connor here from Ward Six.
Marty Malloy, Ward Seven.
All right, please stand for the pledge. All right. After tonight's meeting, there'll be an executive session to discuss matters of real estate and personnel. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Not seeing anyone here for public comment. So we're going to keep moving along. The next. The next item is the approval of the February 10, 2022, meeting minutes. The minutes were circulated in the commissioners' packets. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to look the minute over. I will move to approve the meeting minutes of February 10, 2022.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries seven zero. Next up is our solicitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I do not have a report tonight.
All right, moving right along. The engineers' report.
Thank you. Submitted the report, and I think everything will be covered later.
All right. We're making good time here. Next up is Max Cooper with the Government Relations Report.
Thank you, President Gorson. Hopefully, we can also make some good time here. Just really a few informational items today. Letting the rest of the board know about some grant opportunities. The first one, the local share assistance grant. Key thing, we don't need to act on this now. We just need to start thinking about it, but we will need to act on it at the next meeting. The grant is due March 15th. So this grant opportunity has no match and is extremely broad, which makes it very interesting to use for any number of projects that we can consider around the township. It can be used for acquisition, demolition, infrastructure, purchase of vehicles, equipment, planning, or engineering projects. You know, in discussions that I've had with Dave, he anticipates that this program will be extremely competitive due to the fact that it's, you know, as broad as described, and there's no match required. So the board can consider for this anything it wants to apply to, apply for. Should consider applying for it, and if so, what projects we should consider. I know there's been some discussion recently about the potential for an elevator at the township building to kind of overhaul the kind of handicapped ramp that we currently have. So that would certainly be something that could go towards this in my discussions with Dave. He thinks, or my understanding is the cap for this grant is a million dollars. So that can kind of give you the scale of what grants we should be considering. I know just, you know, myself, I'd be looking for something that would be not necessarily have another funding avenue. And in our discussion with Dave, the kind of handicap infrastructure improvements at the building don't really have a home in any of the other grants that we've applied to. And so that's certainly interesting. Anytime I think of grant opportunities, I think of also some of the historic bridges that we've, you know, considered repairing in Houston and had discussions about over the last year. So that's something that would be potentially interesting to me as well, although there's potentially other grant opportunities to fund that. So just open it up, see if anyone else has any other thoughts they want to share on, you know, potential projects to apply for.
Not just because it's coming out of your newly formed committee, but I love the idea of possibly looking at things that might go across municipalities, too. I think it would make it a lot more competitive if we had something that there were two or three other municipalities going forward together. So we've got a couple of things like that that are in the comprehensive plan and other ideas, but that would just be my two cents.
No, that is interesting. We're about to undertake the feasibility study to extend the Leapers Smidley Trail South, and that certainly would be multi-municipal. Swathmore, Ridley, Springfield, and, you know, possibly Eddie Stone or Chester, depending on what the ultimate, you know, course takes. I'm curious, Dave, we need to apply by March 15th. Do you know how kind of locked in the plan needs to be? Like, could we be vague about a multi-municipal trail? Or does it need to be kind of more well-defined than that?
I think you should probably try and define it as much as you can. I don't know that you necessarily need to have, you know, super engineered plans or anything like that. But I think if you just broadly stated a multi-municipal plan, I don't know that that would. That seems too broad. I think they want to see a defined project.
Dave, is this the sort of project where you have the ability to check in and see like gains and things? Because we really need to address the accessibility issue. So if they can actually pay for that, I feel like we should at least check with that first. And if there's a decent possibility, maybe consider doing that.
Are you asking in terms of eligibility or?
Well, I know, so for some other grants, you're able to, you sort of talk to people and understand whether they think it fits well or it has a good chance of fitting what they're looking for. And so I don't know if this is that sort of program or not.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can reach out to the D C E D and see if I can talk to somebody about that.
But I mean, I like both ideas, but if there's a chance that we could get an elevator out of this, which is desperately needed, I think we should maybe really consider that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Kate. I think improvements to the building here are important and would be a good thing to pursue. I think just based on the grant application being due March 15th, I think we need to be in a position to move on this at our next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. So I mean, I like either of those ideas, but if we get positive feedback on the elevator idea, I'd like to at least put that forward as our primary or only. I don't know if you can do alternatives in this one. But if they seem like they're, you know, it's sort of multi municipal things are more favored, obviously, let's go in that direction.
Dave and I had also spoke about the cap to the grant application being a million dollars. And I think the preliminary estimate for the kind of elevator that would be designed would be a quarter million dollars. So if we want to ask for five slices of bread, we certainly could, but we could also ask for an entire loaf of bread. So if there's any other kind of plans, considerations, kind of in the scope of work in the front of the building, top of the building, you know, we could perhaps go a little bit more broad and think about other things. The worst that they can do is say no, we're only doing the elevator. So there's certainly kind of broader considerations for the building infrastructure we can include if we want to augment the handicap access.
That seems shockingly low to me, which is, I mean, I guess good, but really not really 250 to put an elevator in the building? That's exciting.
I agree. A million dollar grant with no match, it seems like, you know, manna raining from heaven. I'm kind of curious what they're going to approve. Any other comment there before I move on? Okay. So other informational items. So other grants that are coming up, the D C E D, W R P P, G T R P programs are open. And these grant programs are for greenways, trails, recreation. And this had been used just for kind of historical reference. The Furnace Park Phase One, as well as the watershed restoration program, which was used for Parkage Drive, Outfall, Ghulie Park Stream Bank, Sappavitz Park, kind of work later planned for 2022 on Palmer's Lane. So these grants, or this grant, I should say, is good for helping meet kind of pollutant reduction plans requirements. And these are due May 31st, and they have a 15% match. ARPA money could, if desired, be used as a match. So we have a little bit longer to kind of formulate a plan on this specific grant program. But if you guys have any thoughts on greenways, trails, recreation, certainly start, you know, putting your thoughts together, and we'll come up with a plan together. The last item on my agenda is the Delcora 537 Plan. So if you recall, a few meetings back, we had a conversation where we approved, I believe it was called Alternate Number Two. And as part of that, we also generated some comment that Marty and I spent some time putting together. And we then gave that to Matt and Kate. My understanding of that process is that you guys were considering fine tuning the language, working with some folks at county, perhaps that have some expertise in wastewater. I'm curious where that is.
From a county council person today, which was a little tight to our meeting to be able to turn it around. But our meeting was a good impetus to get the comments. And so next meeting, I think, will be a good place to be able to finalize this.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you. There was a bit of distortion.
I think Kate was saying that she was getting some input and that we should be in a good place to move on it at the next meeting, if I heard her correctly.
Yeah, I just got the comments today, like a couple hours ago. So I'll have revised letters for everybody to take a look at, and I think we can get those finalized next meeting.
As far as I'm aware, there's no hard and fast time requirement on this. So if you think the, you know, text of the letters can be improved with a little bit further revision, I have no objection to that. Anyone else have thoughts? I see shaking heads, yes. Okay. I have no other points on my agenda. So passing on back to Vice Chair Gorson.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. So I will do the Parks and Open Space Committee Report. The first item on my agenda, we've talked about this at a couple previous meetings. The D C N R Grant Round is opening for 2022. Applications are due April 6th, so we have a little bit of time to move on this if we decide we want to. There is a 50% match, and it can be used for planning and development of parks, land conservation, watershed protection, watershed restoration, trails, and recreational projects. So I think, you know, at our next meeting, maybe we want to start coming to a consensus whether we want to pursue this and what we would like to pursue. Moving on. This is for the Furnace Park Trail Phase Two. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission has invited the township to formally apply for the grant program for Furnaces Park Phase Two, which that's an exciting development. We have a resolution that we should adopt and send in with the application. So what I will do is I will move to approve the adoption of Nether Providence Township Resolution Number 2022-7. Whereas the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission has invited the township to apply for funding through the Travel Options Program. And whereas the township intends to apply for the completion of Phase Two of the Furnace Park Trails Project, whereas the township has obtained partial funding from other grant sources and intends to use the grant funding and township funds to provide the 20% for the top program. Now therefore be resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Nether Providence Township. Hereby authorizes the filing of the township's application to the D V R P C's Travel Options Program for Phase Two of Furnace Park. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Am I understanding that right? The money we've already received can be used towards the 20% match? Is that what that described, or am I misunderstanding that?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's great. No other comments?
Marty, it looks like you had a comment now?
No, sorry. I was just thumb tapping that question.
Okay. All right, then, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries seven zero. All right, and I will pass torch to Commissioner Knapp with the Public Safety Committee Report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gorson. Very brief report this evening. Excuse me. First is an informational item. The township is asking residents of South Media about the proposed, actually request from some other residents of South Media to make Penn Street and Markham one way. We are concentrating on Penn Street's feedback, at least initially. It's so far been mixed with some folks vocally opposed to it. So as the township gathers that, we'll analyze it, and we can make a decision on that. Thanks, Dave and the team for going out and getting that feedback. Second and last item on my agenda is the approval of Police Chief's Contract Extension. This is in your agenda. And draft is essentially unchanged from the document we were working on towards the end of 2021. All had a chance to review it. We've discussed it a bit as well. So not for seeing a ton of comments or questions, and maybe those that could be answered after a second. I will go ahead and move to approve the amended and restated employment agreement with Chief David Splain.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven zero. Sorry, Chief, that that took so long. Really glad to get that done.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you. The first nine years of my career here have been absolutely outstanding. And this absolutely solidifies the rest of my career that I'll be spent here in Nether Province in the town that I grew up in. And I couldn't be happier. And Bob Scott, I want to thank you for your efforts in putting this together. And the seven commissioners for your constant support and trust in me delivering the public safety here to the township. And I think we have a great management staff here with Dave Grady. Really looking forward to, I've looked, you know, I've enjoyed the several years we've worked together. And I'm enjoying working the rest of my career with Dave and Daryl, the other management person. It's a great management team that's working for the township, and I'm lucky to be part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Congrats, Chief.
All right, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner Gorson.
All right, I'm going to pass it along to President Mackenzie with the Finance Administration Committee Report.
Thanks. The first item on our agenda is a single audit. I think it's actually the first time on that I've been on the board that we've had to do this. But apparently, it's a federal requirement that if you receive over 750,000 in federal funding, that you go through an audit. We did receive over that amount for the more roadside projects, so we need to perform an audit for that project. Dave had asked our auditor that does our township audit for a quote. It's, you know, hopefully, we can keep this to the lower end. The quote they gave us is between 4,000 and 6,000. They've been really great and reasonable to work with over the last couple of years, especially as we've transitioned between some things in our finance director role. So I think Dave and I both have a lot of trust in them and believe that that rate is probably reasonable. So Dave is strongly suggesting that we accept this, and I agree with that. So with that, I will make a motion to approve engagement with B Bergval to perform a single audit regarding federal funding received. This is 2020, Dave?
That's correct.
2020. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries seven zero. And then the last item on my list is the bills. There weren't too many items to highlight this month, but we have a couple here. Let me grab this list. Okay, first, we've got Accufund. That's our accounting software, annual fee, $2,174 to that. Recycling, that's our monthly processing fee for B F I, King of Prussia. I think that's page two. And Dave, I know I'm springing this on you. Are we still doing well with our recycling contracts? Last night, I saw that we were doing very well. Is that still the case? Are you not sure? I don't want to be on the spot on that.
No, we are. The rate for Republic has been increasing a little bit, but it's still very, very good. You know, I think it's in the mid 20, $20 per ton, which is still very good considering at the start of 2020, we were about $95 a ton. So, you know, it continues to creep up, we should be okay.
Okay. Yeah, even if it's creeping, we were way ahead at one point. So that sounds great. So we're doing well with our cycling contracts. The Home Depot charge. Sorry, I'm not tracking the page numbers today, but Dave can keep sort of going down. The Home Depot charge, that is for a generator at the Public Works Garage. I had gone out to talk to the Public Works guys a couple of months ago, and the one, I just sort of wanted to meet all of them and get to talk to them a little bit. And the one thing that they mentioned, that Daryl confirmed, is that they really would like a generator for the garage that in instances where the electricity goes out, there were certain things like opening, closing those giant garage doors that were a problem, which, you know, certainly makes sense. And so Dave priced those out, and Daryl agreed that this one would, you know, take care of the issues that they needed. So I think that's money well spent there for the Public Works guys. Next charge is Montgomery McCracken. Those are our legal fees for the F O P negotiations, which are wrapping up here, which will be great. Multexpress, that is the charge for disposables of brush in Christmas trees, which I think is a great service that we perform for residents and not a huge charge there. So definitely worth that. And the last charge on the A P bills list to highlight is the Spyglass Group. You may remember this, we talked about it, I think, what was it, a year ago, Dave? It's been a while, right? That we authorized them to perform an audit of our telecom fees. They found a savings of just over $1,500 a year. The way that the deal works with them is that they get that first years of savings, but then we get to recognize the savings going forward. So it seems like a big benefit for us. Next, the A P bills, there's a separate one for our FEMA PMA Fund. We have to keep those charges separate for the funding that we got regarding the demolition on Glen Road. Hopefully, this is, I feel like I've said it a couple of times, but this should be really, really it. Is this really, are we really done? This is, I think, the final invoice for the 1012 Glen Road demo coming out of the fund, out of the FEMA FEMA Fund.
Should be the final invoice. I think we still have a little bit of a battle ahead with PMA on a few things, but that's okay. We're working on it.
All right. So not quite there, but getting close, getting close. Now, the regular A P interim bills. The first highlight item is B and L disposal. You know, Dave gave us the overview there that we're doing well with recycling. We have our C D C A and Delcora charges, Eastern Salt, supplying salt for our roads, Garden City ladder rental. Hopefully, Dave, have we gotten an update on how it's going? That's the rental charge for our ladder truck while we wait for us to hear from it.
Yes, Chief O'Rourke has been giving me updates throughout the process. Sounds like they were waiting for parts to come in. They were expected to come in, I think, anytime now. So hopefully, in the next two months or so, we're hopeful it will be completed.
Yeah, and then do we, is, do we pay partial months or any portion of a month is a full charge?
Good question. I'd have to look at the agreement that we have with Newtown Square.
Yeah, we should ask about that, or at least see if we can do that, because that's a big, you know, big difference if we don't need a full month.
Sure, yeah. If we, we'll check that out and see.
Then last item on the A P interim bills list is Tree State Timber. That is for tree trimming at Martha Burton Park and removal of a dead tree at Ghulie. And then the last list is the A P bills list. We have our debit charge there, our insurance charge, Delaware Valley Trust for our workers' comp. Dunlap CPAs, that's for the finance director work for January. As I understand from Dave, that's going really well, having this firm take over a lot of the functions of a finance director. Dave is still doing, you know, certain things that need to be done internally through a township employee. But Dave, I don't know if you have anything to add there, but it sounds like that relationship is going really well.
Yes, that's, that's accurate. Been very happy with the services so far.
And then, so just based on, it looks like the way the bills came in, we have another Garden City ladder rental for February. One needed to be paid before we were able to meet, and one will be. And then we have our school charge that we coordinate with the school district. And is it for items to highlight? So I'm going to pull that somewhere scheduled.
Yeah, give me just one second here.
Okay, perfect. Oh, I had it, sorry, I had it on the top of my mind, didn't realize. So I will make a motion to approve the A P bills list in the amount of $45,166.65. The E P interim bills list related to the FEMA PMA Fund in the amount of $7,260. The A P interim funds total in the amount of $1,704,022.74. And the A P bills in the amount of $124,033.22. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries seven zero, and that is it for me.
All right. Before we move on, I just want to make a couple of brief remarks about the township tax bills that residents have been receiving over the past week or so. It's come to our attention that two of the inputs on the township tax bill are incorrect. The millage rate listed is last year's, and the date by which an unpaid bill will be sent to collectors is a year off. Please rest assured that the amount due listed on the bill is accurate. The tax collector computed the amount using the correct millage rate passed by the Board of Commissioners. If you'd like a copy of a corrected bill, please contact the tax collector, and she will provide one. We apologize for any confusion that this may have caused. And with that, I will pass it along to Commissioner Barnes with the Community Health and Environment Report.
Thank you. The C R C stream cleanups are in March. Leaper and Smidley Parks, the Chester Ridley Chrome Watershed Organization will be holding stream cleanups throughout the region on March 26th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Oh.
Yeah.
Keep going.
And moving on, the C A T group cleanups completed. A big thank you to the Citizens Against Trash Group to complete the cleanups on February 12th and February 21st. You may have seen the signs around. And as for the E A C update, I'll let Marty talk to you about the meeting.
Yeah, so in terms of the E A C, it met last night virtually, and Commissioner Barnes and I were both in attendance. Had a great group. Again, this is an active committee, just very quickly for the commissioners here, things that stand out with so many people coming consistently and having a robust committee. And more folks are welcome to attendees. So anyone listening or watching at home can certainly come to any E A C meeting and join us. But we have a need for roles and responsibilities to be outlined a little bit more. So we talked a lot about creating a Google E A C share space to make sure that we can track and move things forward in a way that makes a lot of sense, as well as people stepping up from the committee to take on some of the different sort of sub areas that we've talked about, including trash and waste, communications, solar and energy, things like that. The, for the board here, the E A C is ready and very excited about possibly the creation of a subcommittee looking at waste and recycling throughout the township. And so they are, they're very ready to help with research, as well as some of the members of the E A C would, would love to stand and volunteer to be a part of that as well. A couple of other points of note, Bill Silverstein, the Chair of the E A C, is hopefully going to be nominated to one of two possible committees at the county level. We wish him luck with that. And finally, we had a long discussion around native plants in the township and the importance and how native plants can be incredibly impactful, especially as we go into the spring season and mosquito season. I actually learned quite a bit on the meeting yesterday as it relates to that. So we're going to be talking a lot more about native plants as well. So if any of these things interest you, that's good. But for the board here specifically, I think they're nudging us to start to look at waste in total and recycling in total at the township level. And I think we're getting close to wanting to have a citizens' subcommittee to be able to do that, very much based on the some. uh, very much based on the summit committee model that was so successful previously. So that is the EAC report.
Thank you. All right. We'll pass it along to Commissioner O'Connor with the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee Report.
Thank you, Vice, Vice President Garson, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Maureen wanted to welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you're thrilled, but anyway, we'll try, we'll hope, we'll hope Dave ends up feeling better in a couple of weeks, right? So, and Chief too, really quick, just wanted to congratulate you again too. I just wanted to say, I can't believe it's been nine years. Um, I know this was what you were hoping for when you came here and I couldn't be happier for you. I know too, before you came here, it's hard to believe, I was thinking here, I'm like, I think there's been, I think there were five chiefs of police in my previous decade and a half of being a commissioner here before you arrived. And, um, our department deserved a lot more, I think, in the way of stability. And I, I think that they certainly got that. And I'll never forget too, one of the chiefs, one of the chiefs, I gotta say this, I went on vacation. I, these are back in the days when I used to take like a three week vacation. The chief started while I was on vacation. And before my vacation ended, the chief had resigned. And so anyway, it was just like, it was a real, it was, we, we spun through chiefs quickly. So anyway, it's great to have you. Congratulations. And, uh, we couldn't be in better hands, as you said, in, in many ways, including with you. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And the first nine years certainly exceeded my expectations. And I anticipate the next 11 will do so as well. And, uh, this is a point of note, as I see her today in my ninth year, I'm the third longest tenured chief in the history of the department since 1931. So it speaks to what you just said.
What do you need to get to number one? Are you on track?
What's that? Who's ahead of you?
Uh, ahead of me was Ray Plotch, who you and I grew up with, their kids. And Ray, uh, Frank Corbett, Ray had 27, which unfortunately I'll never catch him. Uh, Frank had 15, which I fully anticipate catching him. So when it's all over and done, I anticipate being the second longest tenured chief in the department's history.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations again. So anyway, so, so with that said, sorry for taking so long, but anyway, with that said, um, my first item on the agenda, if it's okay, I'm going to toss this over to, um, our very able hands and the hands of Commissioner Cooper from the first ward. But anyway, um, Max, appreciate all your help on this. And, uh, if you wouldn't mind, um, I guess, uh, take it away if you would.
Yeah, happy to take it away, Robin. Thank you for all those historical notes. I had no idea we had a, uh, all those interesting things about our Police Department. Uh, so thank you. So this is really a continuation of, uh, last week's discussion. Um, there are a number of, uh, you know, fantastic questions and kind of, uh, further exploration that was, uh, you know, asked and warranted, uh, after that. And so over the last two weeks, uh, Dave and I spent several hours kind of looking at various funding permutations, uh, looking at various kind of revenue generation permutations at various taxation rates. Um, and we came up with this, uh, kind of comprehensive spreadsheet. If you don't mind pulling it up, Maureen, um, and I'll direct some of your attention to certain spots because, uh, Dave said there's so much kind of information analysis here. It can kind of make your head spin unless somebody's kind of guiding you through it. Before I get to that, uh, I'll just kind of summarize kind of the background on this project so that anyone listening at home can understand. Um, so over the last several years, while the board has made some steady progress on road repairs, um, there remain significant areas of concern. To better understand the overall scope of the road situation, uh, last year, the board requested that our township engineer, Charles Catania, systematically evaluate all of our roads, um, both from a quality of the existing road and the kind of cost repair. Uh, what he found was that there are a significant number of roads, um, that are poor and very poor. Um, and to repair all of those roads would cost approximately $3.1 million. Um, and to repair all the roads, resurface all the roads in the township would be $10.5 million. Furthermore, in some public comment, uh, you said that, you know, we're basically on a cycle where at our current rate, we'll be resurfacing the roads every 40 to 50 years. And best practice seems to be in the kind of 15 to 20 year timeline. So we're certainly well past that. Um, so with that kind of, uh, in mind, the last several years of road resurfacing, um, we've been kind of coordinating with, uh, Aqua, uh, as they've dug up and replaced their piping infrastructure. It's provided us with, uh, you know, financially beneficial kind of model to repair the roads, um, partially funded, uh, from them. The problem with this is that the southern part of our township, uh, which is served by the Chester Water Authority, primarily in Ward One and kind of the southern, sorry, primarily Ward Five and the southern half of Ward One, hasn't really been a beneficiary of that. So in addition to kind of general, uh, road quality issues, there's a, a certain amount of kind of, there's also an equity issue, uh, around those, uh, two areas of our town. So the goal that, you know, I have and I hope we all share is to comprehensively repair roads throughout our township and also address this inequity that's formed. Uh, so the plan, uh, as outlined, has a number of different permutations. I know there was a considerable amount of discussion, uh, at the last meeting about whether or not we should be taking out a loan to partially fund this plan, whether or not, uh, it would be, uh, paid for itself. Um, and so we, we developed two, you know, plans to kind of consider and discuss with the board. One with this loan, uh, of what seems to be a slight consensus of 500,000 over five years at, you know, perhaps 1.5, uh, 1% interest rate or not including that. Um, and so the, you know, the benefits to this would be, uh, pretty cool in my estimation, uh, money management benefit. We have seen over the last several months increasing inflation. Um, and it's never been this high since the, or hasn't been this high, I should say, since the late seventies, early eighties. And during that period of time, there were kind of two, uh, high inflation spikes. One lasted three years, one lasted six years. Um, and the average inflation over, uh, those events was 8.8, 9.2%, respectively averaged over the course of them. If we get a loan that's, uh, $500,000, uh, over five years at the quoted 1.5% interest rate, then, uh, inclusive of the fees associated with the generation of that loan, we'll net somewhere in the mid, uh, $30,000, uh, just from the kind of money management move of paying something down with a smaller interest rate than that kind of general inflation rate. Uh, that, uh, amount for context would be enough to pay for approximately one, uh, 700 foot, uh, long section of road. If, uh, we're wrong, um, the kind of break even point where the loan pays for itself, but nothing more, uh, is 2.71%. So if inflation over the course of the loan is 2.7%, then the loan is entirely revenue neutral, uh, pays for itself. And you potentially get the benefit of just kind of moving around where you spend the money over the course of the kind of next six years. Um, and just, uh, as a reference point, uh, the inflation rate averaged from 1991 to 2020 was 2.3. And from 1981 to 2020 was 2.9. So this, you know, 2.7 number is kind of like well within the historical reference range for, um, inflation. The second potential benefit, uh, to achieve from this is kind of equalizing, uh, the funding, uh, over the kind of total time period of the loan. The two programs, uh, that I described, uh, in the document shared with the commissioners, uh, the one without, uh, including the loan, uh, the amount of spending is heavily weighted towards the tail end, uh, of these six years, um, such that you're really making minimal progress over the, you know, the first few years of the plan. And then you kind of quickly pick up speed towards the tail end. Uh, using the loan kind of flattens that spending curve and it, you know, makes it a more equitable, uh, amount of spending year over year. Um, the last is, and this might be a little bit silly, but, uh, psychological, the first step is often the hardest to take. And by committing to the loan, we're kind of committing to taking the first step of this road resurfacing plan. As an isolated step, I think it probably won't have a significant amount of benefit. But as part of this greater kind of comprehensive plan, I think it could have, uh, benefit. And that's why, um, you know, I'm, uh, in favor for it. Next steps after this would be to continue maximizing grant revenue. We've certainly looked into the CDBG, uh, grant applied for that, and we'll be hearing back from them in the next few months. Redirecting completed capital project funds that are currently targeted towards certain areas of the town. When those projects complete, redirecting that funding year over year to roads, um, as well as optimizing, uh, tax revenue, uh, in service to this program. The kind of bottom line is that without, um, any, uh, other significant alterations, with a roughly 1% year over year tax increase from our current baseline, um, we could repair, uh, or I should say resurface every single poor and very poor road, um, by 2027. And if you keep that, uh, kind of taxation rate steady over 20 years, it would be enough to pay for the entire 10.5 million dollar plan. And so not only does it get us kind of started on the very poor roads, but you know, by the time it, uh, completes, we would be on that kind of 20-year road re-surfacing cycle, uh, that, uh, Charles had mentioned was, was best practice. Um, and so that is, uh, those are my thoughts. Um, just to explain some of the data that's on this form, if we look in the top left, so if you look at A1 and that kind of left side, Dave and I analyzed, you know, our current taxation rate, plus minus 3% year over year increase. Uh, kind of background for people listening at home is that we're taxed based off a static, uh, value or, or home values. Um, and so in order to pay for kind of, uh, inflationary increases, kind of built in cost of living increases, we're forced year over year to raise taxes. And that's just the standard way it's done when you tax based off of a kind of a static value like home value. We, two years ago, had a 2.6, uh, you know, about tax rate increase. Last year was, I believe, 3.2. And so we generally hover kind of around that three. So we looked at, um, how much revenue we would generate over the next 20 years? If we kept the tax rate, you know, averaged at three, if we made the tax rate four, and if we made the tax rate five, just to kind of see where do those numbers get us, kind of explore that. And then I'm going to give you some more numbers to look at. If you look at uh, box 102I, I'll let you pull that up. We kind of looked at how much revenue is generated in total, uh, over the 20 years between those different, uh, kind of tax rate, uh, plans. And we looked at the overall difference over 20 years between the kind of 4% and 3% number and the 5% and 3% number. And when you look at the 4% and 3% number, the overall increase in revenue generated is 16 million over those 20 years, um, which assuming, you know, kind of steady state of 2.4% inflation, pays for every road in other providence to be resurfaced over a 20-year period of time. Um, we thought 20 years is a significant amount of time to kind of bite off. And so how do we kind of come at it from a more manageable angle? And so Dave and I discussed, well, how long would it take to just raise the 3.1 million? And we kind of looked at six years as a potential amount there. And so when we, uh, looked at the next six years potentially of our budget, um, all the different funding sources that we've potentially eligible, we included, you know, the potential for increasing that tax rate year over year by 1%, um, redirecting some ARPA money, the potential benefit from this kind of loan inflation, uh, uh, plan that we, we've discussed. Um, completion of capital projects and redirecting the money that was, you know, previously at Ghulie Park, East Rose Valley, uh, some other projects into this upon, uh, completion of those line items. The CDBG grant, we've applied, uh, somewhere in the area of $380,000, uh, although we've generally gotten closer to 100,000, uh, per year in the past from that grant funding mechanism. Kind of hanging over the head of this, we don't know how the infrastructure, uh, bill, which has been passed, will affect any potential revenue that's generated. So that's a question mark. Could be beneficial, could not be. Um, additionally, completion of currently kind of designated debt service over the next six years, uh, would free up an additional $730,000, uh, dollars over, over the next six years. And the liquid fuels budget, if you conservatively estimate that we would get $200,000 per year from that over six years, you'd get 1.2 million. Uh, lastly, uh, consideration was given to Aqua. And when we considered this, we really kind of considered it maybe a revenue neutral kind of liability almost. Um, because frequently, uh, the roads that Aqua rips up aren't listed as our poor roads. They're listed as our fair roads or good roads. And so our, our repair of those actually takes money away, um, from our ability to repair the poor roads, which is, you know, part of the reason why, uh, sprawl and Ward Five, uh, roads are, are, I think, falling behind other parts of the town. When you look at all of these potential revenue sources, we get 4.1 million. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think just some perspective. I mean, I don't know if that's a completely fair statement. I mean, a lot of the roads that Aqua just did were, were absolutely in the poor category. Just, I mean, I don't, I don't think we should be talking about the Aqua money as a liability here. I mean, the Pine Ridge roads were in terrible shape, as were the Park Ridge roads. And I think someone would buy the country club. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't want to, I want to be clear that, that that's, that's not.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Sometimes the roads are poor. We were more looking at the, Aqua gave us a kind of five-year planned work. Uh, estimates for the next five years and looking at that list, a lot of the roads that they plan over the next kind of five to six years. Um, some of them are certainly poor, but a number of them are, were moderate or fair, I should say, uh, as well. So you're absolutely right. Aqua, you know, it, it helps the roads that it tears up. And sometimes that's your poor roads. Sometimes it's not poor roads. It's, it, it's hard to strictly categorize it in, in kind of a pure liability or pure benefit perspective. It can, it can be both at various times. So with that, uh, if we go over to slide, or I should say, 115R, that should pull up, uh, two potential plans, one with and one without, uh, the $500,000 loan over five years at 1.5% rate that we talked about. And this is, uh, a potential path forward for year over year spending through 2027, uh, that if our kind of presumptions are correct, would result in the total resurfacing of every poor and very poor road, um, which we're estimating to be about $3.1 million worth of work. The kind of revenue that we set aside here is about 3.5 million. So it gives a, a little bit of cushion in case there's some increase, uh, in cost. Um, so I, I open it up to the board, uh, to discuss, and I'm happy to, uh, answer any other questions. There's, there's even more data and analysis here, but I'm trying to keep it as, as focused as possible. I could talk for literally 10 hours about this. That's, that's how long we spend.
The 1% year over year increase, I mean, how, how competent are we about that? Because some, some of that's probably based on things like, um, real estate transfer taxes, right? Which, I mean, everyone hopes the market keeps, uh, booming, but you, you never know, it may slow down.
Uh, I'll let Dave answer that, but my understanding is this was purely the, like the tax revenue that we get, um, from our kind of regular, uh, uh, kind of, uh, assessed values of our, our home. The other kind of revenues generated by the town, uh, as you described, were included. If you look in the upper left again, there's kind of a, um, tax revenue and total revenue. I think the line item that you're describing was included in total revenue, which for our estimates, we kept roughly static. You know, some years there's more fines, some years there's more transfer tax, some years there's less. But we kept that roughly static over the course of the 20 years and we, we looked purely at, um, the kind of assessed home value, uh, our typical tax revenue. We, we also compared our township, I'm sorry, I totally forgot to mention this, to, uh, kind of neighboring and similar municipalities to look at what kind of debt service, uh, they have and how we compare right now. We're right in the middle of the bell curve. Um, so Newtown has, uh, you know, the most debt of the towns that we investigated. Uh, their kind of gross debt to tax revenue, uh, as it stands in 2022 is 184%. Uh, Swathmore was 47%, Media was 58%, and Upper Providence was 20. Uh, in 2022, uh, we're in the mid seventies. Um, and the debt service, the total revenue, so the amount we're paying year over year to how much we're bringing in, uh, in 22 is 7.2, uh, which again puts us at the same level as Media, far less than Newtown, uh, but greater than Swathmore and Upper Providence. So we're kind of in the middle of the bell curve when it looks at our current debt load, um, compared to our, our regional peers.
This is a lot to digest. It's a lot of work. I applaud you.
Dave, Dave and I had a lot of fun with, uh, Google Sheets or Excel.
I mean, I, my inclination is to keep this conversation going. I mean, you know, I, I don't think we need to make any decisions from my perspective this evening. Um, I, there, there's just so many moving pieces here. It's, it's, it's budgeting during budget season in the fall. It's how does the board want to use some of the ARPA money? Um, you know, what, what capital projects do we complete this year that may potentially funds down the line? There is the potential loan component. Um, there are just a lot of moving pieces. Um, so
I feel differently. I, I, no, I think there are a lot of moving pieces. I don't, I don't disagree with you there, but I do think that, you know, the work that's been done, we've been talking about this now since, I don't know, October of last year. Um, and I think we keep getting deeper and deeper, which is great. I mean, this work, again, to Max and Dave, uh, obviously, it can be repeated a thousand times and it wouldn't be enough, that this is incredibly important. It can be repeated a thousand times and it wouldn't be enough, that this is incredibly important work to do. I don't know what more time will provide us. I think. You know, if I were. Hearing the discussion from last meeting where I think Kate was very articulate in talking about how. She's concerned on a number of levels, but one that really stood out to me that I heard her on was. Inflexibility, right? This idea that. You know, a tax increase, for example, might still provide you with a lot of flexibility, but if we, if we go with a loan over a certain number of term loan over a certain number of years. That we don't have that flexibility. And I think for me, a lot of it comes down to. Whether or not you feel like as a board member considering this. That that this is, as Max stated, taking that first step and putting a bit of a priority on something that is important. To our residents, at least as they communicate with us. In this particular issue, or I think. You feel as though this locks us in. In a way that doesn't provide a flexibility. Kate, did I, did I, did I capture your words correctly there?
Yeah, I think generally the concern is this has been an ongoing issue, you know. For since prior boards sort of compounded it probably decades ago, and. I'm just concerned that we're rushing into this here. We're at a, we're at a time where I can understand that there is. Perhaps an interest rate play, but. It does lock in future boards, it assumes a lot of things, it is. Just, I don't think, there's just so many, so many moving parts with the ARPA money, federal funds. And generally, I don't think it's appropriate to. Borrow money to deal with operating costs. And, you know, I guess there's some question about. Whether road repair is a capital cost or not, but I think road maintenance is a general operating cost. It's in, you know, the township's budget every year. And so the reality is if we're not budgeting for it correctly, we need to budget differently. I don't like the idea of trying to force a fix all at once. And I think. Even with the idea that this money. You know, could sort of be, I guess, interest rate free if if we're talking about the inflation situation. It's sort of front loading on a problem that I don't see as a. Quite as an emergency, I guess, as you and Max, just I guess because I've seen it for so many years and I do see that we're paving million, a million dollars, close to a million dollars roads this year. And that the state is going to be paving several roads in other providence. Next year, I think, great day over next year too. So. Major roads and, you know, so the residents are going to see the benefit of that. And so. Compounding all of that, I don't see a huge benefit to paving, you know, literally half of the roads in the township at the same time. I think that's actually counterproductive and then. Sort of locks in a lot of these, these scenarios. I'd much prefer to deal with this on a year by year basis. And build into it. And work towards, you know, Matt and I had a discussion the other day about building towards. A more realistic, maybe every 20, 25 year replacement schedule, you know, we're certainly off that right now and 15 might be a great goal. I'm not sure we're going to get there. In my lifetime, but we could get closer. So anyway, those, those are my general thoughts and concerns and I just don't, I don't want to make. I don't want to rush into it, an issue that I don't see as quite. An emergency that requires a loan for the township. I think that's somewhat of a serious thing to do for a township of our size.
Yeah, I, thanks Max again for all the, and Dave for all the work you've done. It's clearly a ton of work and I had to have Max help me digest it. Because I wasn't living in that spreadsheet for a couple of weeks. I like the idea. For a couple of reasons. I, I do think the loan with a five year payoff and with the current interest rate and. Inflation environment, it seems like a rather safe play and an ability to to front load some money to get a start on a. On a problem that's been. Building up on us for some years. I do like the idea of, of. Beginning a process of looking at road replay, resurfacing and improvements. And shrinking down that 25 year, shrinking this down to a 25 year schedule from the current 50 some. I think the loan is a pretty safe way to do it in a, as presented here, given the interest rate and the. And the inflation environment. It also gets us a head start. This year at a time, you know, possibly in front of the summer when we could. We could take a larger chunk out. My, my thought. I also have concerns about dragging it out. I know that during, you know, budget season, it's really hard to have these conversations. It's hard to find the time to do it. Actually, anytime after June between the summer meeting compression and then right into budget season. Which also involves some, usually some contracts and elected officials running for government. It's really hard to focus on something big like this. I, I think it's, I think it's a benefit to do it early. I would actually be inclined to take a bigger chunk and take the pain. And, and. You know, even get more done. I just, my sense from my time on the board and from hearing, from hearing. Residents complaints and listen to Charles is. And just driving around, we are pretty darn far behind and the roads are in terrible shape. And as a. As a board, we've been. And I blame passports, but without picking on Robert, I think everybody gets in this bind where they feel constrained. To be very careful with, with the residents' money. And to try to get by as best we can. And I think that's a, that's a sentiment that I wholeheartedly follow. I think this is a bit of a unique opportunity to get a head start on it. And I, I don't think the 500,000 in a five year loan. Is, is a tremendous risk and we don't, most of us will be here or be here for the majority of that time and we're going to have to live with it, not kicking it down the road. If we do get other sources, the ARA. Or. We don't quite have the, the matching grants in future years and I hope that we keep doing that. But we could take that money and do, you know, I, we could take more roads or more capital projects. I think we're. I think we're behind on capital projects sort of across the board. And any of that funding that we could. That we could move into capital, I'd support. Or if we don't like this. If we get two years down the road and we think we have other sources of income. And we're flush with cash and we don't like the fact that we took this loan or we want to. We don't like the constraints of it and then we decide that we didn't want to put that much money into roads. To the extent we haven't spent all of it, I think most of it would go out in the first year or two. You know, we could pay that back early and given the. Very small interest rates we're dealing with, it doesn't seem like that much of a. Of a risk. So I think I've come around on it. I. It's a.
Mike, I think that there is a prepayment penalty. I don't know what it is, but I think we talked about that last time.
Yeah, but if it's extended out, even if they paid the whole damn thing under five years. Interest is still manageable and. You know, it, I'm not an economist, but it's hard to imagine a scenario in the next three years where. Today's dollar is not devalued substantially after, you know, a period of low inflation for so long and now running into. Running into a higher inflation environment. And at worst case, if it costs a little bit more to jumpstart us and to flatten out. The sort of planning that the loan gets us and gets us back. A little bit more on track with the. With a more sustainable resurfacing program. I just don't see that many downsides to it. And I also just don't. I think we could talk about, I want to see a more investment in roads anyway. I think it's a responsibility, but. I know how it gets for us when it gets to be October and September. And, and it's tough. I think, I think large capital projects, and I do see this one as a capital project, a capital expense. I think those are. You know, best handled in times of the year when we've got the bandwidth and Max somehow has the time to. To work on that spreadsheet. And my sentiment isn't Max, I. I really appreciate your work, but if. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote, I wouldn't support it just because I felt bad for all the work that Max did.
I'm a glutton for punishment anyway, so I'm just having fun with this, even if you guys all vote no.
You know, I guess, what are you really asking for potentially from the board tonight? Because I'm just looking. At the spreadsheet. One of the funding sources in 2023 is $200,000 of ARPA money. So I guess, you know, I get your point that the $500,000 gets us. A little bit kickstarted, but to really have the plan going, you need funding from other sources. So if you're taking 200,000 from ARPA, we really haven't even discussed as a board yet how we want to use that money. We talked about stormwater. I think we're still waiting for some more information. I'm not sure I feel comfortable kind of. Already slicing $200,000 of ARPA.
Yeah, absolutely. The only thing I would be asking for tonight. Would, we don't even have a pro forma document for this specific loan structure. We have several pro formas for related in various ways. Loan structure. So I would just be asking for the board to approve Dave getting a quote. And then perhaps the interest rate offered when Dave gets his next quote is different than we are considering here. And we would then need to. Address that and decide if we truly want to partake in, maybe the offered loan is 3%. Who knows? And that changes everyone's math. So we have more time to. Digest all the kind of various considerations of the year over year. You know, tax rate change, redirection of ARPA. We have a chance to, you know, double, triple, quadruple check all the math that Dave and I kind of brain dumped on here. And so, you know, all that I would be asking for today is that we have Dave get a kind of quote on what a five. $100,000 loan over five years would look like from an interest rate, kind of get the ball rolling. And then at a future meeting, we could decide or not decide to approve that.
Yeah, I definitely want to see the terms of the financing and I'd love to see us. Think about, again, in advance of the summer. You know, we don't, obviously wouldn't have to lock ourselves into budget, but I'd love to see us. Think about whether or not we want to take a. You know, a longer look and put together a plan to, to address the. To address the deferred maintenance on the roads.
Has anyone looked at the cost of asphalt over the past few years? See how that's changed?
Well, oil is going to.
Yeah, that's definitely going up, given what's going on in Eastern Europe right now. But as far as the last few years, I defer to Charles. Generally, how stable is the price of asphalt? Does it very fluctuate wildly or is it fairly stable? I don't have any appreciation for that.
Memory tells me, say in the last five years or so, it's ranged from the $70 per ton to the $90 per ton range. I actually have that data I can get to if you, if you want, like the bid tabulation for the last several years, then you'll see for yourself.
Yeah, it's extremely valid consideration because if we're going to say, well, we're going to pre, or we're going to do a significant amount of roads early on. We're potentially marrying that up to when the price of asphalt is at the highest and it certainly potentially decreases the value. You know, there's, like you said, a lot of moving parts. I've also heard noise about how. Because of the war, they're going to not control inflation as much as they could because they're worried about crunching the economy. And so, you know, maybe the value that we obtain from the kind of interest inflation is higher, but the asphalt is more, I mean, who knows? There's a lot of moving parts to consider. The only thing that I would ask the board to consider approving right now is authorizing Dave to get a quote. At 500,000, five years and see what the interest rate is. And then at a future meeting, we could consider. Accepting that or not. And that gives, you know, Dave and I time to triple, quadruple, quintuple check all of our numbers and for you guys to start, you know. Exploring them with us and, you know, get more comfortable, you know, potential funding formats going forward. But ultimately, it'll be a year over year budget decision, how much we want to put into it. This is only the first step of potentially many. Yeah, that's my understanding. So. Anyone else have thoughts they want to share before I kind of make a motion or?
No, I, I, again, I appreciate all the, all the work you've done here. I don't think there's any argument in getting a quote, but, but I think over the next. However, much longer we're going to discuss this, you know, we should have one on the agenda.
100%.
We need to be looking at that. We need to be looking at our capital project over the next.
100% and for the record, I mean, I'm actually a little bit reticent to specifically spend ARPA money into this proposal. Because I think ARPA is kind of a unique opportunity to take a bite of like rarely addressed, but big budget items. I know. You know, certainly Henry and Ward 2 and Palmer's in my ward and. You know, certainly other parts of the town, there's, you know, significant stormwater flooding issues, you know, that I kind of like the idea of directing ARPA money to. So any kind of ultimate plan for ARPA money. You know, that's only one small component of this. Most of the revenue. That we get from this does not come from ARPA or the loan. A lot of it comes from completion of other capital projects, completion, kind of a downtrending of our debt service. As well as the kind of slight increase to our, our year over year taxes. And those are all. You know, decisions to be made year over year. Any other thoughts, comments?
I mean, maybe. So Scott, if we advertise it, we could have a separate ARPA meeting, couldn't we? I mean, that might be worthwhile to just take a night and really go through it. I mean, it's a lot of money.
Okay.
I love the idea of just getting started. There was so much uncertainty with the ARPA, what we could do with it. And I think if we started to get some clarity on that. I love the idea of continuing this conversation regardless of whether I go forward or not and the ARPA and concentrate on some of these. Capital needs and investments also at a time when we've. You know, and mostly due to Dave and Kate's really strong work in budgeting the last couple of years. We've, you know, we've had some of our best and lowest tax increases that I can recall. And you really can't, and we have this ARPA. You know, ARPA money coming in as well. It's just one of those really rare times where we. We are future board may have. The flexibility and the space in the budget to take on some, some significant capital projects.
So I move that we authorize Township Manager Dave Grady to explore. The cost of a $500,000 loan over five years. From Delville and I'd like to review that pro forma document at next meeting. If I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Any opposed? Voice opposition by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, motion passes 7-0. Look forward to seeing that document. Thanks, all.
Hey, thanks so much again, Commissioner Cooper, for all the efforts and. And really appreciate you bringing this to the table for us to all have the opportunity to discuss and think about because it's certainly important and it's certainly something that we need to. Need to look at. So with that said, next item on my agenda here this evening is the East Possum Hollow sidewalk. I think this is just informational only. It looks like. The project is set to begin the week of the 21st of March. We've recently been in contact with. The school district, including Longford Elementary School. Mailings were sent out to. The neighbors on East Possum Hollow as well as notice went out in the recent township mailing. East Possum Hollow. For the, during the time of the work, East Possum Hollow will be one way and traffic will can only flow eastbound towards the train station. So with that said, any, any questions or comments on that?
Just one. Chief. When the East Possum Hollow sidewalk project begins the week of March 21st, do you think we could try to have an officer? Nearby during drop off and pickup just to make sure that, you know, residents' driveways aren't blocked or that access to the train station is blocked?
I spoke to Mona this afternoon. She has the plan. She's been talking to the school district. And for the first couple of days, we'll definitely have an officer. Down in that area. My anticipation is the problem's going to occur Brookhaven and Kershaw and we'll have someone there helping Mr. Koppel. Direct traffic and get the vehicles in and out of there. One ask I would have in a township. One ask I would have in the township commissioners during the duration of this project, I think currently, uh, right now we have. Parking, uh, there's no parking on one side of the street. There's two hour parking on the other street. I would ask them to, during the duration of the project, authorize, uh, the police department to post no parking signs on both sides of the street. Cause I anticipate a lot of traffic up and down, uh, Kershaw Road. There is a, uh, it's a narrow road. And, uh, I know the children walking are dismissed through the rear of the school as well. So we'll have. Two-way traffic, which should be pretty heavy there because of the construction. And we'll also have pedestrian traffic in the form of children. So I think a car parked in that area would cause, uh, some, some issues in pedestrian safety. So if we could, I don't think we need an ordinance. We just need to be ear authorization, post no temporary, no parking signs on both sides of the street for the duration of the project. Or at least not the duration of the project, for the duration of the school year. My understanding is the project may last longer than the school year.
Would we do that just during school hours, you think, or, um, just at all times?
My thought was maybe just on the, on a, maybe the timeframe on the weekend, on the weekdays during the day and exclude the weekends and evenings. I think that would, uh, solve the problem. Cause the problem's gonna be at, uh, arrival and dismissal of school.
And just on Kershaw?
Just on Kershaw, yes.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, uh, thank you very much, Chief and Vice President Garson. Appreciate it. And, uh, with that said, next item on my agenda here this evening is the East Rose Valley Road Sidewalk. And, uh, this as well, I think it's just informational. Work on that is scheduled to begin in the month of April. We are most likely going to need an extension, uh, from the state. But, uh, with that said, premier con- contractors is still scheduled in on course to begin, uh, work in early April. So. With that said, is there any, any comments or discussion, uh, on that? Now, and hearing none, I think the, the lesson I'm taking from this is if you wanna sidewalk, if you live on the east side of your road, you have a leg up on your, you have a leg up on your neighbor. So. Anyway, if you're not on the east side, you might wanna forget it. But anyway. With that said, next item on the agenda is the Putnam Boulevard, uh, safety, uh. Uh, concerns. And, uh, on that topic, just wanted to extend thanks again to our chief and our engineer for all the help they've given me as well as, uh, our township manager, Dave Grady. Um, and right now, basically just, uh, working with folks in the community to, uh, try to see what we can come up with. And I'll, I'll be back in touch with, uh, our chief and our engineer as well as Mr. Grady. And, uh, continue to keep everyone up here posted. And if anyone has any questions or whatever for me, or if there's any discussion now, feel free, but otherwise. That would be all I have on that topic. And, um. Looks like the last item on my agenda here this evening is the highway report. If you forgive me too, I was too sore to walk back out to my car to get my eyeglasses. So I'm kind of squinting, doing the best I can here with. Not my eyeglasses, but anyway, for the month of January twenty twenty-two, uh, monthly highway report, um, public works department performed their. Normal monthly duties, which include the following, maintenance of the recycling center, cleaning of inlets and culverts, uh, routine maintenance of signs and intersections. Uh, pothole repair and also routine maintenance of township vehicles. In addition, uh, to all of that, uh, normal work, the township highway department performed the following. They cut, uh, a tree that was hanging in Furnace Park, uh, per the neighbors' or per neighbors' request. They completed the Christmas tree pickup. Uh, they started sewer cleaning throughout the township. Uh, they began cutting leaves for mulch, uh, sales, which should begin in early to mid-March. Eric, strike that, I'm sorry, should be ready in early, in, uh, mid-March. Um, they installed, uh, two hour parking signs on Briar Lane and, um. I guess that's, uh, I guess that's it. So with that said, um, always a, a tremendous amount of thanks and appreciation to Daryl and all the folks, uh, as well at the, uh, highway department. And with that said. Mr. Vice President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor, passing it along to Commissioner Malloy with the Building and Zoning Committee report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardensen. So, uh, a couple of items. The first one is, um, the marijuana sales zoning locations public hearing, which was. Now and today. Uh, so we had heard no public comment on that, um, after, uh, quite a long time of this being on the agenda. So hearing none, uh, I would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance. Uh, this would be ordinance number eight, three, five of two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance of the Township of Nether Providence, County of Delaware, Commonwealth Pennsylvania, mending the zoning. Uh, ordinance by establishing certain definitions and further regulating the location of medical marijuana dispensaries. Medical marijuana growers, processors, significant tobacco retailers and vape shops as permitted uses. In the, uh, I industrial district. This is a fairly long, but stay with me. I'll go as quickly as I can. Be it ordained and enacted by the Township Board of Commissioners of Nether Providence as follows. Section one amendments to zoning ordinance, uh, for the code of township, code of the Township of Nether Providence entitled definitions and word usage is hereby amended by adding the following definitions in alphabetical order. Electronic cigarette, an electronic oral device such as one composed of a heating element and battery or electronic circus or boat, circuit or both. Which provides a vapor of nicotine or any other substance and the use or inhalation of which simulates smoking. B, the term includes a device as described in A, notwithstanding whether the device is manufactured, distributed, marketed or sold as an e-cigarette, e-cigar, e-pipe. Or under any other product name or description. Electronic nicotine delivery systems or Ns, E N D S, any device designed or used to transform an e-liquid. That may contain nicotine into an aerosol that the user inhales. Ns can also be referred to as vapes, vaporizers, vape pens, hookah pens, electronic cigarettes, e-cigarettes, e-cigs and e-pipes. E-liquid, any liquid that contains vegetable glycerin, propylene glycol, nicotine, water and possibly, possibly flavoring that can be used in. Ns devices. E-liquids can also be referred to as vape or vape juice. Medical Marijuana Act, medical marijuana dispensary, a person including a natural person, corporation, partnership, association, trust or any other entity. Or any combination thereof, of which is registered with and permitted by the Department of Health of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania under the Medical Marijuana Act to dispense medical marijuana. The term does not include healthcare medical marijuana organizations under chapter nineteen of the Medical Marijuana Act. Medical marijuana grower processor, a person including a natural person, corporation, partnership, association, trust or any other entity. Or any combination thereof, which is registered with and permitted by the Department of Health and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania under the Medical Marijuana Act to grow and process medical marijuana. The term does not include a healthcare medical marijuana organization under chapter nineteen of the Medical Marijuana Act. Significant tobacco retailers, any tobacco retailer that either devotes twenty percent or more of floor area or display area to or derives seventy-five percent. Or more of gross sales receipts from the sale or exchange of tobacco products and or tobacco paraphernalia at the subject location, including without limitation, smoke shops and hookah lounges. Vape shop, any establishment whose principal product line for retail is Ns, device, parts, components or e-liquids. Principal means the Ns related products constitute at least twenty-five percent of the establishment's aggregate retail sales. B, section three hundred one or two of the Code of Township of Nether Providence, study of permanent uses is hereby amended to permit medical marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana growers, processors, significant tobacco retailers and vape shops as permitted. Uses in the I industrial district by adding the following new subsections fourteen through seventeen, medical marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana growers, processors, significant tobacco retailers. Seventeen vape shops.
You could skip section two.
I think I'm gonna skip section two. We're good. So, uh. It is now moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries seven two zero. Finally, on, uh, my report, um, this is, uh, more informational than anything else. Uh, in that, uh, Maureen and, uh, Bob Scott, our solicitor Scott are working on drafting wording for the R five B zoning. This is the zoning amendment. Which would allow townhomes, which are currently prohibited in the R five B zoning district, uh, which currently has many townhomes already. So they are fixing all that and we should see that, uh, pretty soon.
And it falls in my court, so. Not Maureen's fault.
And that is, ends my audition for the really fast talking, uh, financial services advertisements as well as my report. Thank you.
I like giving the disclaimer at the end of the commercials. All right, right? All right, next up is the manager's report with township manager Dave Grady.
Thank you, Vice President Garson. Uh, just a couple of items here, um, updates from, uh, Delaware County. Information I'm sharing for people at home, uh, Delaware County continues to partner with multiple COVID nineteen testing organizations, providing free PCR testing at Mercy Fitzgerald in Yaden. Keystone First in Chester and the Delaware County Wellness Center in Yaden, as well as the Delaware County Emergency Services Training Center. Uh, there's plenty of information at delcopa.gov slash COVID slash testing. Uh, if you have any reason to suspect you might be positive, it's always a good thing to get tested. Next on the item is, uh, Pico is going to be doing power line work within the township. The. Give me just a moment here while information pops up. Uh, they're sending, uh, Pico has been sending letters out to the affected customers. Uh, in, in the area, they're gonna be investing more than one point three six million, uh, to enhancing the local electric infrastructure, uh, in the area. Uh, work is expected to take place along Allen Street, Carlton, Dennis. So a number of areas in the South Media. Uh, third and fourth wards are, uh, mostly a third ward of the township, a little bit of the second ward here. Vegetation work will begin, uh, next month and then construction will follow as they're doing this, uh, uh, electric line and power line work. Uh, so you may see Pico representatives or Pico approved contractors such as Davy Resource Group. Uh, prior to the proposed start date and they are going to notify customers if any tree work must occur in their property. Uh, Pico works with certified arborists and professional foresters and work will be performed by Pico crews and qualified Pico contractors. Uh, this is, uh, informational. Um, we tend to get, every time Pico comes into town to do some tree work, we tend to get. Calls and concerns from people. Uh, we of course don't have any control over Pico, uh, as they are a separate, uh, utility. Uh, but we can try to work with Pico and see if there are specific concerns. Uh, maybe they'll be able to help us out. So. If anyone has any questions, uh, please, please let us know. We can try and get that to Pico. Delaware County, uh, has a childcare COVID support. Pardon me a moment here while I find that document. Um, but it is. Let me see here. I don't know why I don't have this document available. Sorry, this is the difficulty of working from home, uh, for some things. Uh, so let me come back to that. Uh, also as, uh, uh, Commissioner Malloy noted earlier in the meeting, uh, Delaware County is having a zero waste advisory committee. Um, Bill Silverstein from our, uh, planning commission as well as our EAC has, uh, offered and asked if that was something that he could. Represent the township for. Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Malloy, I don't, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I think you would agree. That it would make sense to have, uh, Mr. Silverstein as the representative for the township. Uh, so, uh, if there's, uh, any concerns or questions that anyone has, uh, please, please let us know, but I think we're gonna give Bill the okay to. Submit an application to be the Nether Providence, uh, representative. And, uh. With that, uh, I'm gonna go off the cuff here because I cannot find the information for the Delco child support, uh, but I will send that around to the commissioners. Uh, but it is a program that allows people, if you meet a certain income threshold, uh, or below a certain income threshold, uh, you could get reimbursed for. Uh, your childcare, uh, payments and, uh, the payments go directly to the childcare facilities. And so if you are a childcare facility or you, uh, have childcare in Delaware County, uh, there's some, this could be something that you qualify for. So. I apologize, I can't seem to locate that document here in my, uh, uh, computer here as I'm working remotely, but I will find that and get that to the board. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Manager Grady. Commissioner Cooper wanted to make a comment.
I have, and I apologize for this, a very brief, uh, comment, totally unrelated, uh, Nether Providence, but I, I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up. Uh, so since our last meeting, uh, really a lion in public health and my personal hero, Paul Farmer died. Maybe some of you heard about that in the news. He was sixty-two years old. He died unexpectedly in his sleep in, uh, Rwanda. And, uh, he really led the field of public health and really transformed it and. Brought fantastic medical care to all corners of the globe, Haiti, Rwanda, Russian prisons. And he really led the way and, you know. Teaching people in public health that every, every life really does matter. And, uh, I just wanted to bring attention to that. And, uh, it's really sad that he passed. So, you know, thanks for the.
Thanks, Max. All right, um, our next meeting is the legislative meeting on March ten, twenty twenty-two. With that, that's the end of the meeting. Good night, Nether Providence.